Introduce yourself and maybe your address, because we certainly want to hear from district residents, of course. But having said that, would you like to hold it for about three minutes? And there's only five people, so the time shouldn't be a big issue. So welcome in. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Falsco, a community member here at the Red Hawk Drive. And my kids attend Army Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I just wanted to voice my support for the teachers of the Milton School District in obtaining fair wage increases for this coming school year. It is my understanding that teachers will receive 8% raises to their base salaries in the proposed 2024-2025 school year budget in our school district. But based on the consumer price index, they're eligible to receive up to 8% every week. If the budget has imposed its path, this would be the fourth out of the last five years that a raise was imposed that does not meet the cost of living for teachers. While I can appreciate that stage shortfalls exist, I have significant concerns over how the school district of Milton will be able to retain the experienced quality educators that it is known should employ if cost of living raises are not standardized. We have nothing but one thing to say about the teaching staff at the elementary school our children attend, and we wish for that not to change. Additionally, we look forward to our kids having experienced teachers who feel badly valued as they progress through various stages of their educational journey. Let's face it, we ask so much more out of our teachers than when I was growing up. They have to navigate more challenging circumstances and have higher expectations placed upon them as teacher passes. Many end up using their own monetary resources to provide an exceptional experience for all of our children, despite having to pay more for their insurance premiums than they used to. And teachers routinely put in more hours than they are contracted to work as they answer emails, and they meet with parents, and they plan special events in our schools. But they do it because they care, and it's their passion to help teach children academics, as well as inspire them to be caring and productive human beings as they grow up. That being said, we have to show our teachers that we value them, and that we want them to remain an integral part of our Milton School District community. Again, I recognize that shortfalls and speed funding make the task of balancing a budget quite a project. But I worry that not offering fair wage increase to those who educate our youngsters solves difficulty for our district down the road. Those teachers are the foundation and heart of everything, and they deserve the very best that can possibly be offered to them. Thank you for your consideration. Thanks for your time.
Next up, Tony Falso. Looks to be the same address, so welcome.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. I'm Tony Falso. It's by my same address on Castlemore Drive. Kids go to Army. They love Army. We've had nothing but 100% positive experience with Mrs. Stuti throughout the entire school. So I don't want to sit here and my wife could swear we didn't coordinate this, but she's very prepared and lays out some data and that sort of thing. I intended to just come here and shoot them in the hip a little bit more. Maybe a little bit about myself. I'm a retired police officer from the state of Washington. And before I retired, I was president and crounder of our guild. So I have some experience, good union contracts and negotiations, and I have an idea of the various dynamics that occur. And I guess without, I don't want to come in here and tell you, sitting here and regurgitate a bunch of things you guys already know. You guys already know the numbers 100 times better than I do. I guess what I want to get at is what strikes me the most is it's, it's a, you know, these budget shortfalls are happening. You know that these teachers are taking the brunt of it. I understand you're squeezed, or well, where do we make cuts? We, we have to pay the printer. We have to pay, you know, the plumber. I get it. But in my experience, and especially with police officers, not too different, little bit of a hard hiring environment the last 10 years, where I came from 20 years really. And my concern is that if you keep putting all the weight, or the bulk of the weight, I understand staff is the bulk of the budget, but if you keep putting it on our teachers year after year after year, there's going to be a breaking point. And I think we're quickly approaching that. And I guess I remember, I haven't listened to all of these community forums that you're putting on about budgets, but one thing I did hear that stuck out with me was Mr. Dolman pointed out that for quite a while, our district's functioning with real high grade levels, uh, performance levels, we're punching way above our weight compared to what we spend on the students and what our budget is. I think that's been at least predominantly on the backs of the teachers. And I don't think that's been going for much longer. And in talking to teachers, it's, we're going to hit a crest here where they're staying here because they love it here. They love the families. They love the kids. They love the environment. But there's going to come a point where, as is the case with all of you and your jobs, somebody offers a certain amount of money. You're going to choose to go there. We're going to lose good staff, great staff, and we're not going to be able to hire that good staff and great staff. And we're going to have vacant positions. I know you're worried about, I'm less worried about you cutting programs and, and not being able to fill them, or just not filling them because you, you reproduce, you repositioned staff. I'm more concerned about you having positions you need to fill because you kept music class going, but we can't hire a music teacher because Mrs. Goff retired, and nobody wants to come here because we're not paying them. Because they're like 15% compounded over time behind their wages compared to, compared to. So I'm just here to really have, I, I just want you to hear, at least from my perspective, what my experience has been. And where I come from, they're paying $25,000 bonuses, and the next jurisdiction over is going, well, we'll pay 30 because we're trying to hire that one recruit. Okay? I'll, I'll cut it short. One last thing. I'm long-winded. Well, now I can't remember what it was. Anyway, I hope you'll just take it to heart that, you know, they're not going to all stick around forever. Thanks for your time.
All right. Next up, the signed up order, I guess, is Terry Olson.
Good evening. My name is Terry Olson. I'm a district resident and a district coordinator at Army and Consolidated. I'm speaking to you tonight in hopes that you will strongly consider giving Milton educators the raises that we deserve. Since COVID occurred four years ago, we as a teaching staff have seen a large increase in the needs of our students socially, academically, and behaviorally. We work harder each day than ever before. I see my colleagues emotionally drained and physically exhausted on a daily basis, and sometimes even in tears. We deserve to be financially compensated for all we do to meet the needs of our students. I am begging you to not impose the minimum again. As you all know, inflation has hit us hard, and it is difficult to make ends meet. I just finished my 25th year in the district, so I would expect that my salary would be more than enough. But because we have not received the raises that we truly deserve for the past several years, my salary is not enough. I have a part-time job that I took on several years ago. It helps us, it helps me to set off the rising expenses and somewhat compensates for the very small raises I've gotten with the district the past few years. But it also takes away, takes me away from my family. Instead of spending quality time with my children on weekends and during summer break, I'm often at my second job. You and board members speak about the importance of teacher retention and about the wonderful teachers our, our students have in Milton. Please give us the respect we deserve and show us that you really do appreciate us by not imposing the minimum on us, but instead giving us the raises that we truly deserve. And not just an increase on the base wage in which the veteran teacher gets the same raise as a first-year teacher, but an increase to our individual salaries. My 25 years should be worked up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Jake Silk.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Jake Silk, and I live at six fourth of Bob Marley. Two years ago, a tiny fourth grader with bright blonde hair spoke to you about paying the teachers. As you can see, not much has changed. I'm still blonde, still waiting for my freshman skirt. Jay is still attending the meeting tonight to stand up for teachers in Milton. Teachers are important. My grandpa Linda was a kindergarten teacher. My grandpa Bob was an elementary school student, and my mom is reading, is a reading teacher at Milton Park. I could also share a giant list of all teachers at Milton Keynes and Northside that are, that really helped me grow up. Just not very well, unfortunately. Let me tell you about my amazing sixth grade teacher. Miss Healy believed in me even though I lost 75%. She always had an extra copyright in me. Ms. Nelson wrote on my report card that I am a leader with kindness, empathy, and friendship. She figured out that if you want me to learn that, you better send me from the front row because I'm coming everywhere. When the front of my crowd broke and looked like a mouth, Miss Gray here gave me two blue eyes to stick up without because she really understands me. I have six years left in Milton before I graduate. Don't cry on me. I don't want to, like, wobble on. I want the best teachers to come to Milton and save Milton. How do we make sure that happens? You have to take good care of all of them, care of them. If you are allowed to give them a 10% raise, give them all 10%. If you are allowed to give them 7%, give them all 7%. If you are allowed to give them 0.12%, give them all 0.12%. Anything, anything less feels like eight of golf had a three-point shot and only one point was added to the scoreboard. It's like Wedbaker hitting a home run and making her stop running past a kid's face. It's like Hazel the therapy dog saving the dead in Northside, but in only getting half the doctorate. Or like me, scoring 100% on science quiz and my mom not putting it up in the refrigerator. The teachers in Milton have already shown you how great they are. They made the three, hit the dinger, saved the dead, and aced the test. No matter how you vote tonight, they will come back. You can pause and work hard. That won't change. But how they feel while they are working hard can change. Take care of the teachers so that they can take care of me. I can't stay for the vote tonight. I have to go to my baseball game, but I will be home. Thank you for listening and for thinking about my words. Money is always going to be hard, but spending it on what's important to me. The people are what make your life special.
Thank you. And the last one who signed up for a speech tonight is Caleb Steinmetz.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Caleb Steinmetz. I live on South Oak Drive, right off of Bryant Road on the east side of Jamesville. And I have, I have proudly served as an educator and have been highly involved in Milton schools for the past six and a half years. My educational teaching career began with teaching seventh and eighth grade health and specially designed PE. Next year, my responsibilities will have expanded to teaching seventh and eighth grade health and PIED, specially designed PE, the added eight elective, and I will be taking on the online individualized PE program. Regrettably, the compensation for my teaching role has not kept pace with the rising cost of living, including food, gas, and housing. Consequently, I take on about 50 supervisory roles in sports a year, check on numerous MMS and MHS dances and recitals, currently advise four clubs at the middle school, and coach track. These additional commitments started off as a way to build rapport with students, staff, and the community, but now have become a necessity to make ends meet for myself. Yet, they are still insufficient. In addition to my teaching duties and extracurricular responsibilities, I have been donating five a month twice a week for more than a year, and working over 20 hours weekly at polls during the school year, increasing to full-time hours over the summer alongside of four weeks' intense teaching summer school. These extra commitments are a necessity, however, they do cause a significant amount of stress, which could potentially impact my efficiency as a teacher if I continue to have this rate. Having been fortunate enough to start my career with student teaching in this district, I was assured and always heard of Milton's strong teacher retention rate, competitive compensation relative to other districts, and its supportive community involvement, community environment. However, over the past six years, I have witnessed a decline in teacher retention as more teachers are going elsewhere, both in and out of education, for higher pay, or out of frustration when new hires in the district are making near or in some cases more than our veteran colleagues. While educators are often told, and we willingly know that we are in this profession for the outcome rather than the income, the reality is that inadequate compensation is hindering our ability to stay and witness the fruits of our labor. This sentiment is not unique to me, but reflects a broader issue affecting many teachers who, like myself, are exploring other professional opportunities due to financial constraints. I am deeply concerned about the impact of these financial challenges on my colleagues, particularly those with families or dependents. The change payment schedule, how many paychecks we receive over the course of the year, causing us to stretch our finances during our summer months, adds further strain. I urge the board to consider granting teachers the full CPI increase we have earned and rightfully deserve. Your support in addressing these financial concerns will not only help retain experienced educators, but also ensure the continued success and stability of our school community. Thank you for your time and consideration. I unfortunately will not be here for the vote since I'm currently working up three to nine at polls. So thank you for your time.
All right. Anyone wish to speak that did not get to sign the sheet? Okay, then we will move on. Thank you. Public comment is superintendent update, red hot highlights. Mr. Dolman.
A couple of things that we want to highlight. Obviously, with the three-year school year added closing, we don't have as many things going on at our school. There's still some great things happening across our district. One thing for people to be alert to that's coming up, we have a new look to our district website that's coming soon. We've been hard at work at this throughout the school year, planning a major refresh to our district's website. A big thank you to all of the staff, students, parents, community members, whose helpful feedback is being incorporated into this process. And updates should roll out beginning next week with the website. And that, we'll, we'll have a poll report on summer school coming up at a future meeting, but I want to highlight one summer school class that's new this year. We added a women in welding summer school class, and it's underway. It's been a fantastic opportunity for our students. We're really proud to be able to offer this class. Mr. Schindler at Milton High School has led this women in welding workshop at the high school, a unique chance for students to learn the basics of welding and craft projects for themselves in a metal shop. Each day, a different area of businesses come in and share information. It's a focus on the trades. They learn about apprenticeship opportunities and continuing educational options. But most importantly, they get an opportunity to hear from women who are currently employed in the trade. So it's been an excellent opportunity for, for students to get more information and to explore a few of the things they hadn't thought about before. A couple of things that are happening with our FFA, the FFA World Berry Expo. We had three FFA members, Lauren Stutika, Janet Boston, and Ella Schultz took part in the World Berry Expo, which includes the International Berry Judging Contest in Scotland, Ireland, and England. The team is continuing their journey throughout this week, and their judging is taking place right now. You can follow their successes and updates on their Facebook page and Instagram pages. We also, this past week, had FFA members Ann Marie Harvey and Dewayne McHazer travel to Washington DC for the Washington Leadership Conference. Students there did an insight on how important it is to be a leader and get to work with students from across the country to advocate in different sessions and experiences. So congratulations to our FFA students taking part in those events. And then just this past week, we had three boys golf members named to the state of all academic, all-state honorees. So Brett Whelan, Michael Axe, and Jason Ray were all named all-state all-academic team for boys golf. Congratulations to them.
Okay. Questions at all on our district highlights? Okay, B then Rich, I guess you and I will tag team this a little bit for sort of retapping and prefacing our community focus groups. If you want to start, I guess we can, or we didn't practice this.
I'll start. We, this coming Wednesday, we have our third of three huge focus groups. They're designed to raise information across the community and get feedback from community members on financial planning. First session was held back in May. That was designed around raising awareness about state's funding for education and how inadequate it has been. It's created a system of hats and have knots across the state. At the second session, we dove more deeply into what impact that state funding has on our local school district. And at the session coming up this Wednesday, it's going to be a deeper dive into both what that looks like for upcoming forecast, budget forecasts for our school district, the pending fiscal cliff, and what are some different options and ways to address that. Probably had 35 to 40 or so community members at each of the first two. We've been really pleased with the high level of questions and conversation that's taken place, and you look forward to session three coming up on Wednesday.
I don't have anything else. That's a pretty good summation. So certainly open to the public. Anyone can join us that would like to. We would encourage that. So third and final, and then we don't have a definite path beyond that, but we'll work that out toward the end of that third session. So thanks to the board members that have been able to make it. Although it was scheduled, it's a little chaotic, but we've got several of us there at different times, and that's been really helpful. Appreciate it. So, okay, questions at all on the focus groups? We will move on. Next up, Mr. Skewak is going to make his way to the podium. We have one of our annual reports, if you will, and Jeff is going to give us a look back, maybe a little bit, at the athletics and activities from our district. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. My news over here at this time of year, and it's going to give us an analysis of how our activities department's fared this year. I think overall, it's a pretty phenomenal year by all accounts. First and foremost, I need to thank my assistant Tracy Galloway for all her hard work. That's the most important thing right now. So anybody knows her, know she does phenomenal golf, like it may happen. Got some highlights from the department in general. I have a bullpoint academic excellence, as Mr. Dolman already stated. We've had numerous student athletes from all different sports get all-state academic awards. This has continued through the last few years, and that's been, most golf just being a most recent example. Our try-three student athlete GPA was 6.35, where our athletes typically go between point or almost half a point higher than the general population of high schools. So if you make the argument for the value of education-based athletics, there it is right there. Coaches accolades this year. We're a member of the Badger Large Conference. We had three coaches of the year, which is phenomenal. Ian Curst in basketball as a first-year head coach was the coach of the year for the conference. Kurt Muzzi in softball, and Kurt Mealan in boys golf. Dan Paul, our new football coach, is also coaching in the WFC All-Star Game this summer, which is a great, a great thing for handling for our program. A couple of things that I really want to touch on real quick are student athlete performance in training and injury prevention. One area, or two areas, we've made huge growth in the last couple of years is athletic training. So for this year, from 2024 through 2027, we were awarded the National State of School Award from the National Association of Athletic Trainers. That's a huge credit to Terry Kloss, our athletic trainer. Our athletic performance offerings is also something that has grown tremendously over two years, and Red Gor is kind of the mastermind behind that, deserves a lot of credit. Facility upgrades, you all know about Jerry Slomstein, all the excitement surrounding, the updates to our facilities make the goals, that facility safe and accessible. Just like a year ago, we were able to host a ton of things. I think it's been a common, I sit up here every year and talk about the things we are able to do now because of the new facilities from the referendum. That has continued. We're able to host events for the first time in school history, such as sectional basketball, sectional wrestling. All these things have never happened before before. Excuse me to re-do those things now. Just to name a few. Moving on to Red Hawks playing collegiately at the next level. I had missed that year with 18 Red Hawk athletes playing at the next level, which is phenomenal. That's the most that I've experienced as my fourth year here as athletic director. Some highlights there, I'm not going to list all 18, but Wedbaker going to Butler, Aiden Sinclair attending the University of Missouri to wrestle, Tyson Peach self to go to state to wrestle, Ethan Mitchell, University of Milwaukee for track and field, and in golf, just very recently, getting a preferred long running, he could be repaid at the basket. So all those, just to name a few, but a tremendous accomplishment by all those athletes. Team success this turn in the fall, girls golf. We had Bethany Viderick as a state qualifier. Volleyball finished with a record of 28.7, which is, they just had a phenomenal season. Got Ench out by line here for the conference championship there. This winter, boys basketball, in golf, was the Badger Conference Player of the Year, and All-Star Game participant, and like I just said, we'll give you the great mention. Girls basketball, they were the Craig Outman Miss In-Bike Champions. It's a good, a good win for them. Holly Morehart is also an All-Star Game participant this summer. Wrestling, wrestling been a phenomenal season. Three individual state champions, Aiden Sinclair 215, three-time state champion Tyson Peach at 138, and Maddie Peach, young lady at 126, and six state qualifiers as well. Something that very just recently happened that I've added on here is that we had athletes who were wrestling, we selected the national dual-beat team for the state of Wisconsin. So we had three young ladies, Maddie Peach, Devon Albright, and Dylan Albright, who's going to, is an eighth grader, who's going to be a freshman for us next year. We're all on the national U6, national team for Wisconsin, the U16 team, and, and they got second place in the country as part of that team. And our boys, which had Aiden Sinclair and Tyson Peach on it, they won the national championship just last weekend. So that was a really cool reason for that. This spring, boys tennis, Riga Stoviac was a state qualifier number one singles. Track and field, we have five school records broken, which is the most high tenure here. Pole vault, girls pole vault, the four-by-two relay, the 200-meter, triple jump, and long jump all broken this spring. We had five state qualifiers. That was fantastic. Boys golf, for the first time in history, our boys golf team finished as Badger Large conference jackets, which in a lot of ways is a lot harder than being a regional or sectional champion with our conference, which was fantastic. And another thing just recently that happened yesterday, Brett and Kate Mealan were named first team all-state golfers, athletes. We'll kind of wrap this up with softball. Well noted, our historic softball season, conference regional and sectional champions, highlighted by Stephanie Cacott's 108 game, putting streak in state, which is a phenomenal run. And you were there, you were lucky because it was one of the most exciting athletic events in the world. And they finished second in the state, brought home the silver ball with a 26-30 run record. A couple individuals, I think, that are of note. I brought these two individuals up last year, but as seniors, Aiden Sinclair I brought these two individuals up last year, but as seniors, Aiden Sinclair was nationally ranked the number-one nationally wrestler at two hundred and fifty pounds this year. He won the Dave Schultz National High School Excellence Award, which is the single premier high school award given to a, like, one high school wrestler nationally. It is as good as it gets, and that's a, it's a tribute to his skill as an athlete, the quality of person he is, and the quality of academics that he achieves. He's also a member of the USA Pan America Games, competing this summer for U-18 and the U-20, U.S. Open champion. So just can't overstate, we're never going to have a kid like that that's a generational type athlete. I hope they'll appreciate what he has. On the girl's side, Gwen Baker's kind of in that same boat. She's all everything for every year, basically for the last three years. All-Star, Hall of Fame state, you name it, picture of the year. In her career, she threw seven perfect games, seven, which is unheard of. And the number that flew my mind, and I didn't know this until about two weeks ago, in her high school career, she has eight hundred and thirty-two career strikeouts. I don't know how you ever can. So two athletes, two individuals that just had generational type careers here. On top of that, we got some activities things. Our Marching Man finished third at state again, and they have continued to do great things. We've taken numerous trips, kind of across the country, across the world. Most recently, Saskatchewan, going to Eckery, just got back yesterday, and that was fantastic trip. Fun slides and all, and hospitals, and you name it, but that was a really good trip. We're looking at FBL, National, FBLA Excuse me, National Qualifiers. We have five kids qualified for nationals, just two are going a little later this summer to participate nationally. Looking forward, just to wrap it up real quick, looking forward to next year. Some things that we're looking to do in the athletic department and activities department, and this will come up later on. Establishing the built-in program and better winners club for culture building and leadership building within our activities department. Next year, we start for the first time sponsoring boys and girls lacrosse. That's been a long time coming with our co-op with Jamesville, that's exciting. We're transitioning to Go Fan digital ticketing platform, different from Tickets Bicket, which will be a huge benefit to our consumers. And one thing that I'm excited about, we continue to work on projects to improve our facilities, is kind of start the project to improve our varsity baseball team. Hopefully with a new dugout and lighting to really help that just something up. Any questions?
Jeff, is construction of the new red stands on schedule?
It is for now. So they're about ready to lay into the slab. They're on topic now, I was just talking to Stephen this morning about that. That's exciting. Anytime we're on time, that's great. We're going to start pouring cement for the slab Thursday, and hopefully the rain holds up for us. So as of right now, that is all set to be done early to mid-August, I hope.
Jeff, you haven't shared anything previously with the board about the upgrades at the baseball stadium? Do you want to highlight that is where the government is coming from, not specifically, but?
Yeah, I'll just tell you, Jeff. So we're working with a donor who has a vested interest in improving our varsity baseball team, the one behind the school. I don't know if you've been back there, caught a game, but the dugouts are dire, and they're, they're ready to fall over. To replace those with kind of state-of-the-art structures. Also add lighting, which is a huge expense if you're looking at all the electrical, all the things that are wrapped up in putting up lights. The expense of that, if you're probably looking at a half million to seven hundred thousand dollars. We have a donor who is very interested in doing this vested interest and supporting us in that venture, and hopefully we can proceed this summer with a goal of having that done for next spring. There'll be more on that coming up. I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse, but it's one of those things we always want to be working towards improving our facilities, and that's kind of next on the list.
Okay, quick question, Jeff. Do you have any feel for, it's really impressive when you listen to our kids that participate in athletics and activities and how well they do academically, and the kids are obviously achieving across multiple levels. We've got a thousand and fifty students in that high school. Do you have a feel for how many kids participate in athletics or maybe athletics and activities whole?
Yeah, so it's a lot easier for us to get definitive numbers on athletics as far as rosters are concerned. So we're looking at about like forty percent of kids participate in athletics. That number is far greater when you're looking at activities and core curriculums such as archy man or show player and stuff. So we're well over, you know, half of our student body, maybe two-thirds, when it's all said and done, are participating in something. And that's something that we're always trying to promote, right? We're always trying to find new ways that gets engaged, that gets connected to the school and to the Red Hawks. So those numbers are good. And if you look at just our athletic numbers, which have been tracked for years, we're very consistent with kinds of pre-COVID numbers. I mean, there's fluctuation that occurs with the natural ebb and flow, but we're kind of right there from pre-COVID in our participation numbers.
Anybody else have questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on. All right, we will move on. We have recently had a curriculum committee report, Jennifer Cher's had for us, and she has been to share what that committee has been working on.
So we met last week, and our first agenda item was the information that we learned on Act Twenty. Basically, the overview of Act Twenty, basically passed in Wisconsin, introduces significant changes to reading instruction and literacy science-based, actually, early literacy programs in our schools. And we are, there's some key points. Basically, it's going to be implemented effective the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And there's going to be several requirements for the district. It's going to be early screening and intervention programs, K, four, K through three. And then there'll be teacher training. So again, some professional development and certification updates based on this act. Curriculum, yeah, and trace practices, instructional time. Again, the specifics of the diagnosis, but again, this is just key overview. Parental involvement, again, regular updates to parents. And then there'll be some progress monitoring and measurement. Obviously, they must accountable for those results. So we gave us an overview and then what our next steps are, Peter Milton. There'll be an invitation plan. We don't know specifically, again, when these directives are coming down, but we're just hoping they're coming. Teaching and learning coaches and reading intervention. Thank you even more that we have hired additional reading specialists, which is going to help nicely for our Act Twenty requirements. Let's see, administrators, teachers, and learning coaches, and reading interventionists are all going to be trained. So again, district will be hosting, who the hell do I do this? A six-state leadership institute to train these folks well in the Act Twenty requirements. And educators, four, K through six, so although Act Twenty is specific to four, K through three, we are, staff has decided to make sure that all the way up to sixth grade, a launch of special education, case managers, and they will all be trained together. So going along beyond that training through the Rollins Center for Early Learning and Early Learning Program. So that was an overview of Act Twenty.
Can you listen to that?
Okay, sounds good. So if anyone has any specific questions, you can certainly ask me or Rich. All right, sounds good. The second thing the curriculum committee discussed was the discussion and possible action on the K through five math curriculum adoption recommendation. And in Word docs, you will find a memo, which actually does kind of spell out not only the overview, but her rationale and the steps actually that have been taken, wanted the invitation plan, specifically cost and funding, and then her suggested approval. So again, happy to talk more about this topic as well.
Couple things with that, that curriculum adoption that I can highlight. And these are in the memo, but I want to make sure that they aren't missed. So it was a year-long review process, will be pivoted in classrooms, a couple different programs. And then had regular work with companies that have those two different programs throughout the year. And the selection that's been recommended is to adopt I Ready for the K-five math curriculum. Board members are probably familiar with I Ready because we use it as a screener for the map and reading map for the last couple of years. It'll be a nice seamless fit between the math curriculum and their screener. One of the advantages of having I Ready that we found is that it, when you take the screener, it identifies as certain areas that students struggle with. And then having that as our curriculum allows us to be able to individualize that instruction to class and student needs. We found that it's a very rigorous, rigorous content, so there'd be a lot expected of our, of our students as they work through this curriculum. The cost for the program is listed in the memo, that is spread out over the three years, and will come from the regular teaching and learning budget. So it's not additional funding outside of the budget. It fits within Julie Musgrove's teaching and learning budget for the next three years. And from the conversation at the curriculum committee, the recommendation from the curriculum committee is listed in Word docs and on.
I was at that meeting, and it was a great presentation that was given. I really liked the feedback that was provided, the little snippets, board members have the little presentation in there, and they seemed excited about this program. So.
Quick question, what happens after three years? Is it renewable or the?
It's an option to renew. One of the things that, one of the value of having the three years is that our sixth grade through twelfth grade wasn't ready to adopt a math curriculum yet. And they're going to be undergoing, probably over the next two years, some work on identifying essential standards to make sure that the standards that are taught in each classroom match the state and national standards for that each grade level. So a possibility through your job role would be to adopt either continue with I Ready at the K-five level, adopt I Ready at a further grade level, or adopt something different that goes higher.
I have a question, Rich, that I think I asked you when we spoke, but I want you to talk to the board. I think you mentioned it's been ten years maybe since we've replaced our elementary curriculum, is that right?
That is correct. The curriculum that we have in place, it is ten percent.
And I think even, you know, so my kids are recently through the district, and I remember a curriculum called Bridges. I remember we got math expressions and now we're transitioning again. I guess from a layperson, I made the comment that math hasn't changed in several generations, right? Math is math, right? There's just, the subject matters. So when you say curriculum that we're purchasing, you know, the components of math haven't changed in any of our lifetimes. The way we teach it probably has, and I know that needs to continue to evolve and we need to engage students in different ways, and that I can appreciate. Two pieces to the question, have we had a curriculum cost? I'm assuming we purchased math expressions ten years ago-ish. Has there been a curriculum cost in the interim, or once it's paid for, are we just using it until we choose to replace it? And would that be the case with I Ready? And do we, you know, we've been able to, I think we've seen good progress, good outcomes student-wise. The I Ready data, at least what I can reflect on, shows improved scores and kids trending the right way, et cetera. I'm hoping you can affirm that the investment in curriculum will enhance that and keep us moving, you know, the way we want the kids to progress. So that might have been a really complicated question, but.
There are a lot of pieces to that question. I'll try my best to, the different parts to it. We went with, ten years ago, we adopted the American curriculum, that's correct. And ten years is a pretty long time in content here, I think. Pretty typical, different content areas is maybe a six or seven year cycle where curriculum is renewed and updated. And the model for curriculum has changed quite a bit over the last few years. If you think back to pre-one-to-one, when much of the curriculum was found in state, particularly in math, was found in a math textbook. We're purchasing a curriculum, a lot of what you were purchasing at that time was a textbook. And once you purchased that textbook, you owned that textbook for as long as you wanted to use it, for that series of student textbooks across the years. With online learning, there are a lot more opportunities, more support for students, more support for our teaching staff as far as resources for students, not just what typically we need, lessons in a textbook, but extensions for students that already, that need additional challenge, support materials for students that need additional support. And particularly with I Ready, that connection between the assessment and screening that we do with I Ready and how that can be individualized for instruction. A lot of the change now with much of the curriculum being online is you're not necessarily buying a item like a textbook, you're buying a subscription for a certain period of time. I would push back a little bit on the math is the same now as it was. I know that you and I are the same, close to the same age. And when we went to school, a lot of math was drill, multiplication tables, and learning your math facts, if you will. Math so much more now is the application, being able to not only understand the knowledge and math facts, but understand the why behind that and how you would use that, both in your everyday life and in a wide variety of different types of careers. I also would push back a little bit on the, we have really strong pockets of high math achievement across our district, but we're not as consistent across our district with the math achievement as we are with the reading and the EDLA. A big part of our reading push over the last few years has been pushed towards that consistency, making sure that if a student is in third grade or getting that same curriculum, no matter what class they're in, room they're in, what school they're in, and I think we do that really well. Teachers work really hard to work together to provide that high-quality education for all students. And I think that that's something that we're still getting to with math, the consistency across the state. I think the curriculum, new curriculum, updated curriculum, they help with that.
One thing I noticed in the meeting, as a parent, I struggle sometimes with the current curriculum, being able to help. They don't know how things are done, which they just don't know. Like they said that there are these portals where parents can go and there can be something that they can help, watch the videos or anything. So I thought that was a really good idea to help. You're working for some of your parents or the parents trying to help them.
I would add, on both topics, kudos to Julie and her team, they were very well-prepared and really helped me understand what was happening with the city. The K twelve, one by ten players, Joe, was, they were really excited. They really think this is the right way to go, this is the right curriculum to choose. And they really, one of the things they really get all of us, that I write really watches and keeps it up. Which is really super important, so I'm really excited for that. If that's the right drive, and I, they were beating me in the meeting, I'm super excited about it. So I have great faith in the boss.
Just to be clear, I am fully supportive of this. I was trying to raise rhetorical questions so that we had a robust discussion about it. But I, I'm not at all opposed to the direction that I hope we go. So absolutely, just to be, not insinuating, but first of my excitement for it.
I'm going to defer the purchase of the K-five I Ready classroom mathematics program as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy's motion, the second of I Ready to improve the, approve the purchase of the K-five. Tracy's motion is seconded by Rick to approve the purchase of the K5 iReady classroom mathematics program. Does anyone have questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye opposed, that clearly passes. Oh yeah. All right, thank you, Jennifer. All right. And another committee report, recently engaged, our recent draft is our HR folks and Rick will share what they have been up to.
Okay, thanks, Bill. HR committee met last weekend, June 19th. First item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on 2425 athletics and activities number of positions. Administration has reviewed the needs for the athletic activities and advice for the upcoming year. The number of both positions at each school is outlined in the memo in board docs. Administration and committee are recommending a baseline of 225 positions to be approved for the upcoming year. This is an increase of seven positions from the current year, but will be cost-neutral due to reorganization of positions in the high school. This reorganization includes the elimination of the strength condition for every position. These will now be afforded by the high school side. Also included are two new positions for the better weather club advisor and the Milton maid.
Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Questions from anyone? It's an action item.
Just a quick question, Chris, on the athletic performance. How does that work? Is it just open weight room mornings, afternoons?
You don't know that?
I'm sorry, I had it.
Do you want to connect?
Yes. How did it work before and how is it going to work before?
So in the position that we're eliminating, we're absorbing and kind of reallocating those funds created, it was about three years ago. We were kind of at this point of redeveloping all of our safety sheet programming and we had the opinion that it would take kind of an outside of the school day direct, right? Since then, with the growth of athletic performance programming in classes within the school day and within our, by the physical education department, kind of absorbed all of those duties and responsibilities. So that's the why, we're kind of dissolving that position and reallocating resources. But there's still a need for before and after-school supervision. So our programming, it's not just like open the weight room and do whatever you want. It's not, you know, any type of business. It's like directed group strength classes, essentially, directed completely at athletes and athletic development, for the most part. So, so we added some supervision kind of assignments there. Those would be our high-end teachers who are going to come and go before and after school to deliver that programming outside of school. Make sense?
It does, yeah. Is that open to non-athletes as well?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's open to everybody, but we've kind of geared it towards athletes. We get plenty of participation before, after school and during the school day of non-athletes.
I'm going to make a motion that 225 support staff athletics activities and advisory positions be the stat baseline used for the 2425 year and the 202425 athletics activities and advice we as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Tracy, as you just heard, to approve 225 support staff athletics activities and advisory positions for the upcoming year. Questions from anyone? All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye opposed, that clearly passes.
Next, item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on July and August 2024 and June 2025 summer school positions. Human resources and payroll departments have reviewed the needs for the stat baseline for July and August of this year and June of next year. Reason the committee is bringing this to the board for approval like this is due to the fact that summer school is spread out over two full years. We are looking to approve July and August of this year and June of next year. Those number of hours of instructional and support staff hours that the committee is recommending for approval are in the memo in board docs. Additional staff or hours are needed that would come back to the board for.
Anything else on that?
Any other standard?
This is a question.
A quick question, is it growing? Are we adding a few hours?
So we are, we are getting close to that, or at that pre-endemic level of summer school. So yes, it's increasing.
I will move that the number of instructional hours not exceeds 1,306 and support staff hours not exceed 3,062 for the 20242025 summer school program. Any additional hours not listed in the baseline will be subject to our policy forward 1.1.1 and brought forward to the board for review if possible.
I'll second that.
Jennifer's motion is seconded by Tracy and I won't repeat it, it's a little lengthy there, but we're approving the instructional and support hours necessary to operate our summer school program this summer. Questions from anyone? All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? Thank you. Carly, could you please plug the microphone so that I can see? Oh, yeah. That's all. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we will move on and new business pops up next. And we've got discussion and possible action on 2425 WIAA membership renewal. This year is a very usual and normal thing that we do. Jeff, I didn't know if you had to explain it more than that. It's kind of a, one little caveat, there's now a digital signature scenario, like email you and Rich the link, so at your earliest convenience, please.
Hit or not?
Just hit or not, and we're all good. But other than that, like I said, it's the standard annual renewal.
I'll move to approve the 202425 WIAA senior high membership renewal.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by John to approve our renewal, our membership of WIAA. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, that clearly passes. The new business is discussion and possible action on the 2425 preliminary budget. And as you are, if you've been paying attention, this is another step in our process. Ross undoubtedly has slides for our entertainment that have colors and all kinds of fun numbers on them. So he showed flickers with Carly. Yeah, you can hold a little bit of the slide dust. So we have Ross and Cody up and we'll follow forward.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are bringing forward a preliminary budget plan for the 2425 this year. This will become the basis for the annual meeting we're going to hold in August. And tonight, we're going to go through some of the assumptions that have guided the budget process to renew this past year and some of the things also that have come into our review book descriptions last couple of months. So I want to start. For our key assumptions, this goes back to, right after we approved the budget in October, probably a few days ago. We know that we're going with the second year of the state budget, so we know that we're going to have a $325 per pupil increase as part of the 2025 development. The third Friday membership, we're anticipating a 0% to a minus 1% reduction in the third Friday count for average. And that we have the cleaning enrollment exemption appearing on revenue calculation. This is starting to stabilize a bit, and by that I mean it's starting to shrink in that most COVID years, where many schools across Wisconsin saw a significant shift in their enrollment, ours is starting to stabilize into a trend. The open enrollment and voucher payments increased $344 per student, which is a higher multiplier than what our local amount is increasing. We, for the first time in recent years, switched from being a open enrollment fever district to a slight open enrollment in positive district. We anticipate that to maintain these for next year, so we're figuring that into our calculations for next year. We also know that based on the state budget, the general pool will increase for the coming year. In that, we still need to rely on total share costs at the state level for all 420-plus school districts. However, based on our treatment in the low revenue ceiling and the fact that we have additional spending in the budget for this current year, 2324, we do anticipate the need picture to improve by October, in longer than over the summer. We know that this will cause some shifts and swings in our levy profile in the fall, so we do have and we are anticipating to continue, this is a short-term, hard to face strategy for 1.39. This is not something we have to make a decision on tonight, but it's something we're going to be discussing in the annual meeting, but in our finance committee, leading up to our October discussion. And finally, this is the first year post-COVID that we have our asset funding exhausted and for this coming year, all our asset funding is removed from revenues and expenditures with. Next is a slide that we've seen a number of times before. As we look at our state funding model and what has happened in the last 13 years, we know specifically that the state has decoupled the increase in the per pupil amount under the revenue limit, a weight room inflation such that a gap has appeared since 2011, 2009 actually, where we are projected for next year to be around $3,300 behind the rate of inflation on average for the state of Wisconsin. And as a reminder, this school district's revenue limit is below the average. Okay, and also for 2425, finally, you may remember that in the fall, we had some very groundbreaking information in regards to state budget and something we still didn't know going into the annual meeting and even post-annual meeting, most specific of which was the change in the state budget to the low revenue ceiling. We did find out later in our process, we had access to low revenue ceiling, so we came before the board in the fall and discussed a number of 110 expenditures related to maintenance, technical infrastructure, and up to and including the stadium project that I referenced earlier this evening for the matrix. This for next year is going to be reinvested back into operational costs, not just for staff, but for benefiting reasons for the coming year. And as we should all remember, this time last year, we were discussing a additional 2324 budget development that included structural deficit. I guess I mean that one of our operational costs, namely our lease cost for our one-to-one devices, was being put on 110 as funding. So going into this year's budget development, prior to knowledge of the 2325 state budget, we were anticipating addressing the structural deficit of these developments. Thanks to the low revenue ceiling increase, that is no longer the case, we are bringing forward a balanced budget for 2425 at this time. At that, here is a quick highlight of some of the items that drive our preliminary budget calculations. You'll see through the third Friday average on the September membership line, a slight decrease in overall membership. This is reflected on that 0.1% I referenced earlier. And we do have the per pupil increase of $325 per pupil identified on the second line. At this time, going into the summer, we still have property valuation increasing at 5%. I've got that crystal ball, I'd say that's likely to be higher when we get our certifications here this summer. We don't have that number yet. But our overall budget for this coming year, we anticipate the overall budget to be increasing less than 1%. This reflects not only the lower state investment, if you'd like to see it, we're talking about change year to one year the next, but most of our revenues, I'll show on the next slide, came from the low revenue increase last year and we're stabilizing the coming budget year by spreading it over two years. In the revenue calculation itself, I want to draw specific attention to the change in the per pupil calculation, right in the middle there, where it says per pupil increases apply during the 2324 or 2425 budget year, we're showing an increase of $325 multiplier. But in 2324 specifically, you'll see that low revenue ceiling increase, which got us to $11,000 in the low revenue ceiling change in the state budget. Reason I point this out is when we talk about spreading that for over two years, you'll see that most of our revenue increase occurred during the 2324 year and this coming year is increasing a far less amount. Taking that one step further, one thing I want to highlight in previous years, you may have heard my predecessor or even others speaking on this topic discuss what's called the whole harmless exemption. In years where the state budget does not provide these breaks, the per pupil multiplier, anytime that is occurring at the same time the fine enrollment occurs, the penalty is applied to your calculation and continues to shrink your base revenue year following. In 2223, we had a whole harmless exemption identified at $351,000, which was subsequently removed from our base calculation for the current year. Now that we have a 325 multiplier, that is no longer triggering, so going forward, we should see a much more consistent revenue picture, but I won't put my breath on. I will put my breath on. Below the line where it says non-per pupil exemptions added, the one thing on there that bears interest is when we talk about overall revenue increases, not all of that authority is subcostly cost to spend. On the line indicating the private school voucher deduction, you'll see that over the course of two years, that exemption has risen considerably. None of that money goes to any students in the school district that we instruct. All of that money becomes a tax pass-through as a school district to those private voucher So in a salient fashion, we have a balanced budget for the general fund of $49,199,367. Special education of $7.37 million, which is required by lots of the balance in the transfer fund. Our debt service fund includes, as I mentioned before, the initial deficit strategy beyond our current debt schedule, but the levy reflect of there covers our calendar year payment for 2025 and our current year expenditure for 2025. Our capital privatists fund is returned to our annual planned increase through our long-term capital maintenance planning. And our food service fund is increasing at a nominal amount based on pricing cost of food in that area and staff compensation increases. The employee trust fund is for all of our OPED expenditures on a ongoing basis, so unless revenues exceed expenditures, that is by design, so we can start to address the OPED liability that's in our balance each year. And our bond 80 for this coming year is balanced through adjustment in local fees as well as a reduction in plan taxing. In summation, just to reiterate some of the things we talked about, the total general fund increase is less than 1% anticipated. A 325 per pupil is in place with the 2325 state budget. Beyond that point, it is unclear if that will maintain. And if you're watching the news, this is currently going through reports right now as a challenge. I do think it is possible that we may still have the 325 to consider for 2527, seem by the planning, but I have no control over that at this point. The tax levy credit will increase another 7% this fall, again referencing last fall's approval. The state budget for 2325 increased the tax levy credit program by 27% and another 7% this coming year. All of those funds, while they are based on what school district levy across the state, it is not money that comes directly to school districts, but is applied back to municipalities through the Department of Revenue on individual tax revenue. So if you read your tax code, it's a little box that says taxes produced by state levy credit. That's what I'm referencing here. The July 1 estimate should be out within a week. This coming year, there is a lot of uncertainty on what that's going to look like. As I mentioned, I do feel confident that our A picture will improve going into, not just July 1, but going into our certificate certification. But part of the reason I'm not putting that preview in specific numbers tonight is for that very reason. Some of the most recent news, especially in how FNS has some people concerned, are those estimates are going to be somewhat inaccurate. But regardless of that, that should not impact us in the short term. I do anticipate that A picture to improve with the fall resulting in slightly lower tax levy today. The administration is going to continue to monitor all changes and make revisions ahead of the annual meeting. Things that might come up between now and then, we'll have, not only our July 1 estimate, July 1 8 estimate, but we may have some clearer information on some of our competitive grants and any total updates that the EPI constructs as a non-revenue. Beyond that, tonight, we see the assembly board approval for the preliminary budget. This does not have a binding effect, as it's a part of our original fall approval, but it is required for us to continue operations as of July 1, as opposed to the 25th. And in the board docs for tonight, I have a memo outlining some of the facts of this research now, as well as a high-level summary of the all-funds budget by three-digit source identification and two-digit function for categorization.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the 2425 preliminary budget. John's motion is seconded by Annette to approve our preliminary budget for next year. Once again, questions from anyone? I see none. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And Ross? All right. That's the end of new business. And that will push me into this latest A is action on stat and reports, which mentions there's an updated version of the original.
I'll move to approve the stat and report as presented.
Tracy's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our stat and report and its update. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion clearly passes also. Give some donations, that summation is also included in board docs. I see $37,000. I see thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars from our generous. I must, I didn't, I missed thirty-seven and fifty-five dollars. My apologies. Uh, Jen's motion to, and seconded by Ed to approve our distant donations with gratitude. Questions? All in favor of approval of those, please say aye. Aye and opposed. And also clearly passes. Meeting dates, Mr. Domon.
Our two regularly scheduled board meetings in July are on Monday, July eighth and Monday, July twenty-second at six thirty P M. Here in P B C. Uh, we mentioned earlier that we have a community focus group coming up on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. That's also at six thirty P M. Here in P B C. We have an H R committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, July first. I don't think that's a Wednesday. But Monday, July first at six thirty P M, the first floor conference room. And then a policy committee meeting for Tuesday, July second at six thirty P M. Here in the P B C. And we're looking to schedule a finance committee meeting before the July twenty-second board meeting. And some possible dates are Tuesday, July sixteen, after one thirty P M. Wednesday, July seventeenth afternoon, or Thursday, July eighteen afternoon. Finance committee that week of July thirteenth. We prefer to look at possible dates right now of those options or currently in there. Thursday, the eighteenth?
Thursday, November, John and Annette, we're there. We'll have July. What's eight?
So is that too tight? Five thirty, three six? Yeah, let's, let's do five thirty, just so it's not hard and unfortunate to get there. Thursday, the eighteenth at five thirty? Got it.
That is it for upcoming meetings.
Hey. All right. We have an executive sessions opposed. We're trying to entertain a motion for here momentarily as I read the verbiage. Uh, I would entertain a motion to enter executive sessions pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub E, and statute nineteen point eight-two, sub one, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. topic is discussion and possible action on final offer to N D A for twenty-four, twenty-five collective bargaining agreement. Thank you. That was Rick's motion seconded by Tracy. Uh, roll call vote in that. And John? Yes. Tracy?
Yes.
Rick? Yes. Joe is yes. Jennifer? And, okay. That is unanimous. We are in executive session. And we have the potential to reconvene and take action if appropriate.